Please join me in praying. Dear God, would you give thanks for this time and this place, for the opportunity we have to remember that God is here, present with each one of us. We always seek to be God-guided and spirit-driven in moving our city forward in a very powerful way. So we pray now for this day, for each person here, for each soul, to also move their life forward in a powerful way. We pray today for our city, our state, our nation, and our world. We pray these things in and after the nature of Jesus Christ, and so it is. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's officially call us to order. Madam Clerk, would you read, or how about calling the roll instead of reading in ordinance? Let's call the roll and make a determination of a quorum.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, you have not already done this. Pull that out of your purse or your pocket and turn it to silent or vibrant.
Let's see, how about we consider the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meetings of September 29th, 2014. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and so the motion carries. We are right into awards, presentations, and recognitions, and we have three today, and we're going to begin with the Bicycle Advocate of the Year, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Stewart for introductions. We have with us the Bicycle Advocate for the Year today, and we're going to, a proclamation we're going to share in just a moment, but we have with us Becky Afonso. Becky, if you'll please stand. And we have the award winner, Deana Breed, from Orange Cycle as our advocates today. And Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for your notes. Or did I miss something?
No, I think we're going to come down and do a picture. Would you join me?
Oh, man, I am so glad. This is a big deal for us, and I'd like to have Becky just share a couple of minutes. If you don't, just take a couple of words and share with us about what we're doing.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioners. Good afternoon. For those that aren't familiar with Orange Cycle, they've been in existence since 1972, and they offer a wide range of services for bicyclists, and, but more importantly, they're advocates for cycling and for what can be done for the city in Orlando. They're very hands-on when it comes to customer service and making a difference in their community. Our association, the Florida Bicycle Association, annually recognizes worthy recipients whose contributions to cycling and the community are above and beyond doing business as usual. The purpose of our annual awards are to bring attention to the efforts and achievements of groups, organizations, and individuals who help deliver our mission to educate and advocate for bicycling safety for residents and visitors to the state of Florida. It is my honor as the executive director of the Florida Bicycle Association to present Orlando's very own Orange Cycle, and the owner, Deana, as the 2013 Florida Bicycle Association Bike Store Advocate of the Year. And that is this award that we're giving.
And of course, council, you recall that we provided Orange Cycle with a facade grant to expand their business, and they're one of the mainstays in College Park. And I am certain Commissioner Stewart has purchased a bike from Orange Cycle.
More than one.
And I have as well, so congratulations. We'll come down and do a picture.
Three wheels. Oops. I got, I got training wheels on mine.
Marcia, you have the next two, and let's start with World Polio Day.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Good afternoon. It's good to see you all. Thank you for everyone being here today. I have the honor of introducing someone who many of you may know because of her work in the community as president of the Orlando Rotary Club. I know Commissioner Stewart knows her well as his involvement with the College Park Rotary Club. And she's here, Danielle Chris, to just share some information about the importance of supporting the eradication of polio, something that the Rotary Clubs across the nation and world have been working on for a while. But we are going to ask Mayor Dyer in just a few minutes to read a proclamation for the eradication of polio in our city and proclaiming it that day in our city. At this time, I would like to ask Danielle if she would come forward and just give us a little overview.
Thank you, Marcia. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Orlando and 1.2 million Rotarians worldwide, I would like to thank the city of Orlando for its recognition and cooperation with World Polio Day, raising awareness for Rotary's End Polio Now campaign. World Polio Day is observed annually on October 24th, which marks the birth of Jonas Salk, the leader of the team that invented a polio vaccine in 1955. World Polio Day is an opportunity to celebrate the 99 percent of countries that have eliminated polio, and also to reaffirm our commitment to seeing the last 1 percent of cases eliminated. To mark the event this year, Rotary International will host a live-streamed global status update to end, to update on the fight to end polio. Invited guests include Global Polio Eradication Initiative partners and celebrity ambassadors. In Orlando, we will host a VIP reception in the rotunda prior to our illumination of the End Polio Now logo on the outside of our own City Hall building. We will join with many cities that will be illuminating this iconic, their iconic structures with the same End Polio Now logo, like Big Ben in London and the Sydney Opera House. The fight to end polio is led by the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which includes Rotary International, UNICEF, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the World Health Organization, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and governments of the world, with the support of many others around the globe. Polio eradication has been Rotary International's top priority since 1985. To date, Rotary through individual Rotarians has contributed $1.3 billion and countless volunteer hours to protect more than 2 billion children around the world. After nearly 30 years, the Global Polio Eradication Initiative stands on the brink of making history by having polio be only the second human disease to be stopped forever. There are only three countries where the wild polio virus has never been stopped: Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Pakistan. This year, we celebrate one of the world's greatest achievements in global health: India being declared polio-free. India was once considered the hardest place on earth to stop polio. Now India's success proves polio can be stopped even in the most challenging conditions. Polio eradication will remain Rotary's top priority until the world is declared polio-free. Although polio has been eliminated throughout most of the world and cases have been reduced by more than 99 percent, no country is truly safe until polio has been completely eradicated. All countries will benefit from a polio-free world, and therefore, all countries have a shared responsibility to end this crippling disease forever. Again, thank you to Mayor Dyer and all those involved in making the goal of the Rotary Club of Orlando a reality by participating in the 2014 World Polio Day event and raising awareness of the End Polio Now campaign. Thank you.
I have a proclamation. City of Orlando, whereas the Rotary Club of Orlando, Rotary Club of Orlando Evening, Rotary District 6980, and Rotary International together support World Polio Day and the worldwide eradication of polio. And whereas Larry Howard, Christie Digital Systems, and Electro Sonic show their support of Rotary in the illumination of the World Polio Day image. And whereas Rotarians have assisted in the decrease of annual polio cases by 99 percent. And whereas Rotarians have assisted in immunizing more than 2 billion children in 122 countries, preventing 5 million cases of paralysis and 250,000 deaths. And whereas Rotary International and its affiliate clubs have contributed more than $1.2 billion to help immunize more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. Now therefore, we, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, and Robert Stewart, District 3 City Commissioner, hereby do proclaim October 24th, 2014 as World Polio Day in the City of Orlando.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, in the course of the next couple of days, you're going to begin seeing some ads throughout the country about stopping, eradicating polio, and I will tell you, and I say this when you look at the ads, we are this close. We are this close. Less than several hundred polio diseases throughout the entire world, and when we started this project, there were 3 or 4 million, and so now we are this close from solving this problem. So thank you very much, Danielle, for what you do. Okay, Marcia, and World Stroke Day in the City of Orlando.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Of course, you are aware the stroke is the second-leading cause of death worldwide and the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States. And Global Stroke Resource is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to empower, educate, and facilitate recovery for stroke survivors and their families. It is my pleasure to introduce someone who can tell you a little bit more about it and how it's impacting Orlando and central Florida, Patricia Green, and she'll come up and give an overview. Patricia?
Thank you. My name is Valerie Green. I'm the founder of Global Stroke Resource and BCenter.com. I'd like to express my gratitude toward Mayor Buddy Dyer and the City Commissioners for issuing a city proclamation for World Stroke Day. We are dedicated to helping stroke survivors and their families in Orlando and around the world. While many may think that this is just a simple health-related observance day, I'd like to reiterate the importance that one awareness day can have, and ultimately save thousands of lives from stroke death and disability. I was only 31 years old when I suffered two nearly fatal strokes. Thankfully, my recovery has transformed into a dedicated nonprofit mission surrounding prevention, stroke prevention, and recovery. Please take the following proclamation words surrounding stroke to heart so you can prevent brain attacks. I thank all due advance, especially our mayor and commissioners, for joining Global Stroke Resource Center, BCenter.com, and my fellow stroke survivors with our 365 Challenge on World Stroke Day next Wednesday, October 29th. Stroke is a devastation that must be stopped. It can be prevented, and with this city, with this proclamation and the city of Orlando's support, it is my vision to put a stop to this devastation, beginning with awareness. Thank you for your support.
City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas stroke is the second-leading cause of death worldwide and fourth-leading cause of death in the United States, and is a leading debilitating health problem. And whereas Global Stroke Resource, also known as BCenter.com and its founder, stroke survivor, and Orlando native Valerie Green, is dedicated to empowering stroke survivors worldwide and serves as a leader for World Stroke Day. And whereas approximately 85 percent of all strokes, also known as brain attacks, can be prevented with life-saving knowledge of risk factors and symptoms. And whereas a headache is the most common symptom of stroke, while many also experience slurred speech, numbness or weakness, confusion, dizziness, or blurred vision. And whereas stroke can happen to anyone, including children and babies in URO. And whereas World Stroke Day is an opportunity to empower residents of our community and worldwide to learn how to prevent or recover from stroke. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Wednesday, October 29th, 2014, as World Stroke Day in the City of Orlando.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, in the course of the next couple of days, you're going to begin seeing some ads throughout the country about stopping, eradicating polio, and I will tell you, and I say this when you look at the ads, we are this close. We are this close. Less than several hundred polio diseases throughout the entire world, and when we started this project, there were 3 or 4 million, and so now we are this close from solving this problem. So thank you very much, Danielle, for what you do.
(applause)
Thank you so much, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Of course, you are aware the stroke is the second-leading cause of death worldwide and the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States. And Global Stroke Resource is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to empower, educate, and facilitate recovery for stroke survivors and their families. It is my pleasure to introduce someone who can tell you a little bit more about it and how it's impacting Orlando and central Florida, Patricia Green, and she'll come up and give an overview. Patricia?
Thank you. My name is Valerie Green. I'm the founder of Global Stroke Resource and BCenter.com. I'd like to express my gratitude toward Mayor Buddy Dyer and the City Commissioners for issuing a city proclamation for World Stroke Day. We are dedicated to helping stroke survivors and their families in Orlando and around the world. While many may think that this is just a simple health-related observance day, I'd like to reiterate the importance that one awareness day can have, and ultimately save thousands of lives from stroke death and disability. I was only 31 years old when I suffered two nearly fatal strokes. Thankfully, my recovery has transformed into a dedicated nonprofit mission surrounding prevention, stroke prevention, and recovery. Please take the following proclamation words surrounding stroke to heart so you can prevent brain attacks. I thank all due advance, especially our mayor and commissioners, for joining Global Stroke Resource Center, BCenter.com, and my fellow stroke survivors with our 365 Challenge on World Stroke Day next Wednesday, October 29th. Stroke is a devastation that must be stopped. It can be prevented, and with this city, with this proclamation and the city of Orlando's support, it is my vision to put a stop to this devastation, beginning with awareness. Thank you for your support.
City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas stroke is the second-leading cause of death worldwide and fourth-leading cause of death in the United States, and is a leading debilitating health problem. And whereas Global Stroke Resource, also known as BCenter.com and its founder, stroke survivor, and Orlando native Valerie Green, is dedicated to empowering stroke survivors worldwide and serves as a leader for World Stroke Day. And whereas approximately 85 percent of all strokes, also known as brain attacks, can be prevented with life-saving knowledge of risk factors and symptoms. And whereas a headache is the most common symptom of stroke, while many also experience slurred speech, numbness or weakness, confusion, dizziness, or blurred vision. And whereas stroke can happen to anyone, including children and babies in URO. And whereas World Stroke Day is an opportunity to empower residents of our community and worldwide to learn how to prevent or recover from stroke. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Wednesday, October 29th, 2014, as World Stroke Day in the City of Orlando.
Okay, that brings us to Mayor's Update. And today, we have Orlando Fire Department Deputy Chief Rich Wales here to give us a brief update on what we're doing here at the city, specifically OFD, in regard to being prepared to combat Ebola should we have to. And after that, Phil Brown, our Executive Director at GOA, is going to provide a similar update in regard to preparations at the Orlando International and Executive Airports. And we had a GOA board meeting last week, and Phil briefed us, and I thought it'd be very appropriate for him to give that same briefing to the council, and so it'd be televised as well, and maybe some of the press could pick up on that, because there is a lot of activity going on behind the scenes to make sure that we're as well-prepared for Ebola as we possibly can. Before I call on Chief Wales, I'd like to congratulate him on being recognized as the Orange County EMS Advisory Board, as the EMS Administrator of the Year. He's been involved in the field of EMS, health and safety, and infection control for many years, and we're very proud of his accomplishments. So let's give him a hand while he's coming up.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Just to give you a little heads-up versus what you received from Chief Miller a week ago, just additional preparedness plans that Orlando Fire Department has made in preparing for Ebola should it ever make it into the state of Florida. OFD and emergency management's been monitoring the Ebola health crisis for some time now. The Ebola virus has unique properties that have required additional protections and education for personnel. West Africa's been dealing with outbreaks since its discovery in 1976. While we're hopeful that our region will never be affected, we certainly must be prepared for any event. OFD remains at a state of readiness with our all-hazards approach to many different circumstances. We've been working with regional, state, and federal agencies to ensure that we are educated and prepared to provide care to our patients while, most importantly, keeping our personnel and citizens safe. We have much of the specialized personal protective equipment required to attend patients like this, and much more being shipped now so we can maintain a high level of safety and care, again, for personnel and citizens that we're responding to. Orlando Fire Department, as well as members of the Office of the Medical Director, Orange County Health Department, and all the neighboring fire departments participated in a system-wide approach to Ebola, meeting at the Office of the Medical Director's office last week. Orlando Fire Department's plan was used, along with Orange County's plan, as a model for other fire departments to model theirs after as well. We've also made some updates to our dispatch procedures that during a 911 call to the 911 center, the interrogation of the call, part of those questioning certainly our travel history outside the U.S., specifically in those countries in Western Africa that affect us so greatly right now. Specialized transport unit has been dedicated for the transport of suspected Ebola patients as well, should we ever run into that circumstance here in the city, preparing a specialized rescue truck, keeping it isolated from all the equipment and supplies on that truck to make the transport as safe as possible, again, for crews and for the citizen, and getting that truck back into service as quickly as possible for any other potential calls thereafter. Our response plan's been reviewed by our medical directors and approved, offering it to other agencies as that model plan. Our system-wide consistency on PPE and transport has been consistent, to say the least, again, working with all the other departments around us to make sure that we have a synergistic approach, that we're all approaching these very similar, so when we get on these scenes together, we all work together efficiently. Some of the newest additions that we've included since the seven days since we've updated you last was upgrading some of the gowns that CDC is recommending to full suits along with personal protective equipment, respiratory protection, goggles, face masks, et cetera. Again, looking for the most protection possible for our crews. We also have a district chief respond to each of these events as a general supervisor to oversee the personal protective equipment. The biohazard transport unit that I spoke of, and then our hazmat team also responds to the scene and then at the hospital for the more important doffing of that personal protective equipment that we've heard has been of great concern in Dallas with the healthcare providers there. All the non-emergency activities have been canceled this week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, as a safety stand-down in recognizing the effects of Ebola in a scenario that might take place in the city of Orlando. We've sent out six to eight teams to all 17 fire stations over these next three days to help educate and provide personal protective equipment training, donning and doffing that equipment should they need it. These two-person teams will visit all fire stations, review all the action plans that we've created, and provide it to every one of our personnel to be mostly prepared for this tragic event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Phil?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This afternoon, I would like to give you an update on our plans as well, as I briefed our board last Wednesday. We have an emergency plan at the airport that we have been testing, testing on a regular basis. Part of that plan addresses public health threats such as Ebola. We have continued to communicate closely with CDC, Miami Quarantine. We also have organized and had a desktop scenario on October 9th at the boardroom at the Aviation Authority to test out a procedures in which we involve all the first responder, mutual aid agencies, OPD, OFD, Orange County Emergency, Orange County Fire Department, Customs and Border Protection, which takes the lead in terms of international travel, both at Orlando International and as well at Orlando Executive, since we have that capability at Orlando Executive as well. The system we use is one that's been adopted nationwide. We've had all of our senior executives, in addition to our public safety executives, trained in the National Incident Management System, NIMS. So we focus on a unified command. When the incident occurs, we have somebody in charge, and the key to all of this is communication between all those agencies, because you can't affect the plan unless you have the communication. So we try and deal specifically with facts. There's a lot of supposition that surrounds this whole incident. As a point in case, this morning, the World Health Organization declared Nigeria Ebola-free. Nigeria had 20 cases, they had eight fatalities of that. If you look at what we have in the United States, we have a handful of cases and one fatality. So we try and deal specifically with the facts. The key is containment. We test our programs on a regular basis. We update it, and it's continued to evolve. We know, and I've had direct conversation with officials on Customs and Border Protection in Washington, that they track all the individuals that pass through those three West African countries. We track them. They make that information available to those that need to know, primarily local health officials, as well as CDC. One of the things that we need to be cognizant of when it comes to medical information, there is an act, the HIPAA Act, which is the Health Information Personal Protection Act that we have to abide by. So when we transmit that information, it's only to those agencies that have a need to know and can protect both the victims of Ebola as well as the public at large. So I think to reiterate, we think and know that the key is containment. It's continual training, continual communication with all the agencies. We've had the system tested. We have not had through either Orlando International or Orlando Executive a case of Ebola. We've had concerns raised about passengers that have passed through those countries. We were well-aware of that before they ever landed at either Executive or Orlando International. They've all been screened, they have been negative. So we have a plan, and we have the way to approach it in terms of passage through the airport, and we will continue to update, communicate, and keep you all apprised.
Thank you, Phil. Do you have, anybody have any questions for either Phil or the Chief? Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, occasionally, we get citizens that like to misinform the public about our bond ratings, and we had some really good news last week about our bond ratings, and as we've gone through our budgets the last several years, we've made sure one of the priorities was to maintain our bond ratings. And Rebecca was in New York last week, or the week before, and has some good news to report. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, a couple of weeks ago, as we typically do, usually annually, we go for a review of our credit ratings with the credit agencies, Fitch, Moody's, and Standard &amp; Poor's. This particular trip was in conjunction with the bond issue that we sold this last week. We sold and priced, and I'll get to that in just a moment. But as a result of the reviews of our credit ratings, we have really two main city credit ratings. We have other credit ratings that are associated with a particular bond, but those ratings are specific to the commitments that are made under that bond and usually are not related to the general fund. They're related to some other kind of revenue stream, sometimes a limited revenue stream, so those bond ratings will vary. However, our general obligation or implied rating, which essentially is an evaluation of our full faith and credit pledge, we were affirmed by Fitch as AAA. We were affirmed by Moody's as AA1. AA1 is one step down, just one tiny little step down from AAA. And S&amp;P upgraded us from a AA- to a AA-flat, which is equivalent to Moody's. And so essentially, we have really an excellent credit rating. Actually, I looked this up, and so I'll just say this, that a AAA rating is an extremely strong capacity to meet financial commitments. A AA rating, AA-plus rating, is a very strong capacity to meet financial commitments and differs from AAA in only a very small degree. So essentially, we have been provided a AAA rating from Fitch. There are only nine other large cities in the nation that has this AAA rating. years through this economic downturn has not impacted our credit position in the market. Now, the real test of our credit in the market is our access to credit. In other words, the access that we have to the market and the desirability of our name in the market to be purchased. And the second is obviously the interest rates that our debt will demand in that market. And I'm happy to report that this last week, we had essentially a single sale that was three pieces. The first piece was the sale that we did for our Energy Improvements and Police Headquarters Building. That particular issue came in at a true interest cost of 3.75% for thirty years, which is an outstanding rate. We also did two refundings because the rates were low, and we took advantage of that. And in those two refundings, we saved 3.2 million and 3.4 million dollars respectively in our debt service. The 3.2 million goes to the general fund, the 3.4 million goes to our parking enterprise. That's over ten years. We will achieve those savings at approximately $350,000 a year for both issues. So, I think this is really good news. I'm pleased with the results, and I think it indicates the way, the fine way that this commission, or this city council and the commissioners have handled very, very difficult financial issues, but I think that this is a confirmation of all the good work that's been done.
Thank you, Rebecca. I have just a few things on the mayor's update. We're in the midst of an unusual period, but a very blessed period, and a period that I don't think any other city in America is experiencing. Commissioners, you joined me last week as we broke ground on a new soccer stadium for our MLS team, and then, well, next week, on November, it's two weeks, on November the sixth, we're going to cut the ribbon on the Performing Arts Center across the street. And two weeks after that, on the nineteenth, we're going to cut the ribbon on the reconstructed Citrus Bowl and actually play a football game there between Bethune-Cookburn and Florida A&amp;M, ten months after we started the demolition. So, game-changing event. So, I wanted to report to you that a couple of weeks ago, I joined Mayor Jacobs and about seventy-five other community leaders and took a best practices trip to the city of Houston to better understand how they were dealing with the issue of the chronically homeless. And in the past three years, they have reduced chronic homelessness in their city by fifty-eight percent, which is remarkable, and their overall homeless population by forty percent. And we are carefully dissecting the successful model that they employed, and I'm very optimistic that if Houston can do it, certainly the city of Orlando can do it. And their housing-first model, permanent supportive housing, is what we've been talking about for our chronically homeless population, and we continue on our commitment to reduce that population by one-third within the next three years. Month of October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and did you know that one out of every four students experiences bullying, and nearly every student witnesses bullying of some form during their years in school? And research shows that bullying can lead to depression, substance abuse, poor health, delinquency, and poor academic performance. So, later this week, we'll be making an announcement about a new community-wide anti-bullying campaign. So, that will occur on Thursday, October twenty-third, at 10:00 a.m. at the James R. Smith Neighborhood Center, and I would invite you to participate. The Forty-Fourth Annual Fall Festival in the Park is Saturday and Sunday. More than three hundred artists and crafters will line the streets, and there'll be great food, live music, and children's play area. Now, a couple items on the agenda. The SED Developers Agreement and Associated Lees is on there, and council, I want to thank you as we continue the efforts to create a vibrant sports and entertainment quarter along Church Street. And the agenda also contains our annual funding agreements with the city's partner economic development organizations, and we leverage their expertise, promote economic growth in the city of Orlando. So, any of our partners that are receiving or have their contracts on the agenda, would you guys stand and be recognized? Those are here. And lastly, on the CRA agenda is a high-wage, high-value job incentive to bookthatdoc.com. They currently are located in Seminole and looking for a new location to accommodate their future growth. I'm happy to say they're going to relocate their twelve employees to downtown Orlando's Church Street Exchange Building on a temporary basis, and then move permanently into a building at Creative Village when that becomes available. They'll add thirty-eight new jobs, so that's a total of fifty jobs in downtown Orlando with salaries of one hundred and fifteen percent of the average annual wage. So, that concludes my remarks, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to give anybody that was here just for awards and presentations an opportunity, if you want to sneak out, this would be a good time to do that. I know when you're sitting on the front row, you're thinking, "We're going to get up and walk out," while Commissioner Ortiz is in the middle of his commissioner comment.
Ain't that many, ain't that many leaving?
So, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council, and we give each of the members of the council an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and/or items of significance from their individual districts. And we rotate the order that we do that, and today, Commissioner Ortiz is first at bat.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I want to congratulate Ms. Valerie Green. I believe she left, but it takes a lot of courage and dedication to do what she has done, and she deserves everybody's not only commendations but support and prayers, and we really appreciate people like her to take in the lead in our communities. Rebecca, I wanted to congratulate you on those great news, because I know that you are thanking us, but we should be thanking you and your team for the great and splendid job you all do to keep us straight in the city. Thank you so very much. Mayor, join you on the congratulations to all of those who celebrated the big ground, the kickoff for the stadium. That was a great event, and we had great synergy on that particular day. Everybody was really involved, and we wish we could see everybody celebrating each and every item we have in the city, controversial or not controversial. There was great people yelling and screaming in joy, and it was a great motive for us to continue. That really motivates the heck out of us to continue moving this city ahead. Since we're talking about celebrations, and you were talking about kickoff, let me go ahead and bring in also then, on November twenty-second, we're going to be doing the kickoff of the ribbon cutting for the Park of the Americas. It's going to be the first canine park in the city of Orlando, official canine park. It's a 201 Andes Road, South Andes, on the southeast, right off of Lake Underhill, close to the Training Center for the Orlando Police Department. And it's going to be a great event, of course, and you guys will get to see the great things that our family park and recreation team has done with our park and our workers at this city. They have done a wonderful job in bringing a park that is basically, I can say, almost set, that certified, does crime prevention through environmental design. It's almost there, though. It has all the accolades, so it's going to be a great motive for us to celebrate, too. And on October twenty-fourth, we're celebrating our fourth annual festival, Oktoberfest. This year, the event will take place at the Englewood Neighborhood Center softball field from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. All the residents of District Two are invited, and from other parts of the city, of course. We're going to have an additional perk over there. We're going to have a haunted house, but for that one, you have to pay three dollars. We have to make some money here for the parks. So, that being said, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor, and let me say just a couple of things. First, as Rebecca, thank you for your work. Commissioners, y'all know that I serve on the Finance Committee, and it's, I hear some of these numbers and know the impact of that, and I appreciate your hard work and your team's hard work for what you have accomplished. Thank you very much for that. Next Friday, or this Friday is World Polio Day, as I shared earlier with you. Let me say a special thanks to Kathy DeValt and our staff. This has come up a little bit quickly, more quickly than I would prefer, but they've done a wonderful job coordinating the work that we're doing. There will be somewhere between three and four thousand iconic photographs taken throughout the world on this day, and Orlando is going to be one of those that we submitted as part of that, and I think it's probably appropriate and complete. The neat thing about World Polio, some of y'all may have been familiar with the work, the single largest fundraiser in the world is the Rotary Club and what they've accomplished over the course of the past twenty-five years. And it's also now been matched by a special gift from the Linda Gates Foundation, and so we, as you've heard before, we've raised 1.3 billion dollars to eradicate that, and I have played a little bit of part of that as a president of the College Park Rotary Club, so I know a little bit more about that. Let me also say thanks to Howard and Deana Breed. They've ducked out already, but they're a wonderful success story of a small business in our community. Started off in a little section over in College Park, continued to grow, and their latest new building that they hope to get the CO today on, that's what, she came down to say. I said, "Where's Howard?" Oh, he's trying to get the CO. I'm in here. So, they're going to be in their new building, we hope, by tomorrow, and it's going to be a nice iconic building over in College Park, and it's going to be a wonderful new services that they're going to be able to offer to the community. So, I really appreciate what they have done. To those of you who have been following the Princeton, as we mentioned today in the agenda review meeting, we'll vote later on at the courtesy of the applicant to defer that to the next meeting, and we'll keep y'all posted as to the progress of that. Let me share a couple of events that we've got in the community. The first is that tomorrow night on October twenty-first, the College Park Community Center is one of the locations for the World Professional Badminton Tournament. It's at seven o'clock. The Orlando Lightning will face the Vancouver Velocity at 8:00 p.m., and then they'll face the New York Netters. It's kind of a really neat way. We have been involved in that in our area for a long, long time, and I appreciate Robin and the work that she does over there at College Park Community Center. Also, congratulations to Carowack House in College Park for being honored with a literary marker this week for their achievements to a wonderful writer and residence program that's there right here in our own community. I'll be honored to attend that, be part of that. If you want to learn more about the Carowack Project, you can visit carowackproject.com. It's the time of Halloween, and so Lou Gardens is having their annual Ghost Stories event this Friday night. And then, I was told and compelled to by my friends in College Park to hold a spanner up this Saturday. Look at that, it's on both sides. This Saturday night is the Jazz Fest. So, somebody, can you, am I on TV?
Yeah, you.
All right, all right. Here, there's a better view of it.
Man, is that sign okay?
It's okay as long as it's up here on the dais.
Okay. Oh, man, you guys are tough. Anyway, so it's this week.
You can put that in the back of your three-wheeler, Commissioner Stewart.
I know, I'm going back to my three. I'm going to come back, I'm going to get Deana for that. All right, so, but anyways, this week, y'all get a chance to come. It's a great fundraiser, it's another thing that the College Park Partnership does, that's another example of what we do in Orlando Main Street and the work that we get there. Also, this weekend, if you couldn't have more things to do, the Nautique is hosting the U.S. Open Water Ski Championships on Lake Ipanhoe. It's coming back there, I'm really excited about it. I remember when I was in high school, that's where it was almost faithfully, and we had some great local competition because of that. So, it's Gastro Edwards this Saturday. On the agenda, let me just mention three items, Item C-16, 18, and 21. These are business assistance grants for the Two Chefs Seafood and Oyster Bar coming to Uptown. I've got Larry Zinivaldi and Bernard Carmouche with us. Would y'all please stand real quickly and say thank you for your commitment to our community and your commitment to District Three and the downtown, uptown area? So, thank you for that. PR's Tacos is Item C-18. I didn't see them here, were they here? I missed them. PR's is coming to College Park.
What do PR stand for?
Real good food. Is that close enough? And the Osprey Tavern in Baldwin Park is another that's coming. These business assistance grants mean a lot to the local community and local business to help them get started. As I've heard from our staff, the idea is that the city can't make a bad deal good, but we can make a good deal great, and this is an opportunity for us to make these, to really get a jumpstart on these local businesses. And I appreciate, Mayor, your continuing that, and appreciate the work that this council does to accomplish that task. And with that, that is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner will move to District Four. Commissioner Shin?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I will not hold up a sign, but Thornton Park Main Street is going to be having their block party October 31st. It's on Washington Street, a lot of fun to see the sights, and everybody dressed up for Halloween and get more information on.
You want to hold up this one?
What's that?
You want to hold up this one again?
No, it's okay. I don't need a sign. I'm pretty enough without a sign, Commissioner Stewart. Check it out on thorntonpark.org. So, and again, I wanted to thank Valerie for coming today. She's actually an inspiration for me. I got my blood pressure checked and found that it was 175 over 100 because Valerie told me to get my blood pressure checked, and because of her, you know, I started this process to lose weight and everything like that, so I just want to thank Valerie so much for helping save my life and many lives. Again, it's so important to get your blood pressure checked at least monthly, and that was my blood pressure rating. You can ask my doctor, I was a mess. So, again, you know, that little bit of weight gain or whatever can really be a problem and really puts you at health risks, so again, very, very important for everyone to do that and get their blood pressure checked at least monthly. On the agenda today, Item B-5, the Shingle Creek Trail, I'm very glad to see that it's now Commissioner Ing's district, but that's something that I worked on, very glad to see that recreational facility and things coming forward on that as it gets ready to get built. On Item I to the 18A permits, I know there was a lot of concern from residents throughout my district over some events that had happened downtown. There's a new phenomenon called subbase, and even though some of these events happening downtown are meeting the decibel rating standards, they are feeling the subbase up to two miles away. So, working with code enforcement and the police department to see what we can do to make sure that folks are not disturbed from two miles away. Again, we like to have fun in downtown, but if you don't live downtown, you shouldn't be getting, having your windows shaken two miles away. So, again, we're working, it's not going to happen quickly, it's a new standard we're going to have to put in, how we're going to measure this subbase, but again, we're working with OPD and the code enforcement on that as well. Want to balance that vibrant downtown with being able to live and sleep downtown as well. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
We'll move to District Five. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. Also, I'd like to thank Rebecca and her team for their leadership and their guidance, because oftentimes, a man or woman in a city's worth is valued by their credit rating. Thank you for your guidance and leadership. It's been another busy cycle in District Five. I was able, on October 1st, go out to Jones High School, my old high school, and celebrate their homecoming here, and thank you, Marsha, and your team for bringing the Negro Spiritual Scholarship Foundation here and the angelic tunes of that, and going over that following Sunday to Macedonia Church, where there was a unified effort of community leaders, and I tell you, it was just amazing when we all stood up and locked hands and singing "We Shall Overcome." I've never experienced something such as that, so thank you. Then, on October the 7th, I'd like to thank Greenberg Thorg. They had me as their invited speaker at Women of the Boardroom, in which I shared my journey, and it was just overwhelming, and I appreciate the women of that boardroom embracing me. Then, on October the 9th, I'm happy and pleased to say, because of SunTrust and Goodwill Industries, we just opened up a Job Connections there at Maxwell Terrace on the corner of John Young and Colonial, where you have very, very low income, and there's a Center for Drug-Free Living there, and now they're going to have apprenticeship programs and job resume writing courses, and also, they've already hired, at this point, I think, about six people out of that area for jobs. So, I think there's great things to come there, with Goodwill Industry being right there on site and in that community, because oftentimes, they had to go all the way to the east side, and there was a transportation barrier. So, with them coming now to the west side, I look forward to great things happening in that community where there was not much happening with opportunities for jobs. in that community where there was not much happening with opportunities for jobs. I'd like to thank Mr. James Mitchell of the Orlando Ballet. Because of him, over a hundred kids in District 5 was able to go see Peter and the Wolf and the Vampire's Ball. And I wanted to make sure when I was elected that our children in District 5 was exposed to the arts, so I'm very excited about that partnership, and I saw things on Facebook of our children posing as dancers and ballerinas, so the seed has been planted. So I do expect a multitude of dancers and ballerinas coming out of District 5 and possibly some jewelry art scholarships. I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing me, I kind of, I said last time I was a stalker, for that senior mobility summit that you had there, Peter Community Center. It was so much information that I gathered with me being so new, there's a lot that I don't know, so when I follow you from place to place, I try to gather information to bring back to my community, and I'm excited about all the partners that I connected with that day to make sure that our seniors are aware of the information of transportation that's available to them. And on the 14th, I was able to go out with the Orlando, or the American Heart Society and also Orlando Health, and they're there with the kids from Orange County Elementary School, helping them build their community gardens. So we turned dirt and I think we started over 15 new plots for other kids to raise their own little gardens and then distribute foods to those in the community, so I think that was an amazing thing, and thank you Orlando Health and the Orlando Heart Society. Last Thursday was surreal in my life. As many know, I grew up there in the Paramore area, and I'm blessed and fortunate enough to have marched from Church Street Station all the way down to church to Paramore and the energy. And I'd like to thank this council here, because I wasn't a part of that difficult decision that you had to make many moons ago with bringing soccer to Paramore, many of the venues that I'm grateful and blessed enough to be on the end of it. But when I marched, I had to keep pinching myself, and I must say that a few tears rolled down my eyes, my cheeks, as I thought about the development, the economic impact, the housing and jobs that was coming as I marched down Church Street to that area and the community all coming together, and me being a part of that, it just was surreal. And I'd like to thank this council and Orlando Soccer and the community for coming out to support this great venture, and also as I thought about the SED that's coming and everything, all the great things that are happening in District 5, and me being the commissioner of this district. It's just amazing, and I'd like to thank you guys for those decisions that you made before I got here, for my community. And with that, the end of my day this week ended with me and 25 youth from all over District 5 going to our first Solar Bears game. So it's just a great time to be on this council for my district and for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 6, Commissioner Ing.
Thank you, Mayor, and Item A3, I'd like to welcome Jacqueline Cockerham as my new Commissioner's aide. And Jackie, if you would, just stand and be recognized. Let's give her a hand. Thank you, Mayor. And Item B-5, the Memorandum of Understanding with Crown Point Commerce Park Owners Association for Shingle Creek Trail. This is obviously a great opportunity for us to continue building on this trail, and the sections that's in Orlando will be complete, and we're looking for more construction with the assistance of Orange County and also going into and close to the Osceola Line. So this is a great opportunity for us. The Crown Point Commerce Property Owners Association, thank you so very much for your voluntary donation of property to make this happen within the city of Orlando. The property that's already scheduled for this, where it's located is naturally beautiful already and would be a great amenity for bike and pedestrian trails, so thank you so very much for your assistance in this. And then I'd also like to recognize Glen Ridge Middle School, the home of the Lions, and also the home of District 3 Commissioner, Robert F. Stewart. These are the Omega Sapphire Boys to Men's Program, and this is the Glen Ridge Mentorship Program, and I'm going to ask that the young men would all stand up, those with the red ties, now those are the true leaders of the group. Thank you very much. This is a step-by-step, eight-week mentoring program that was developed by the School Resource Officer of Glen Ridge Middle School, Master Police Officer Jesse Day. Would you stand and be recognized, Jesse? And also assisting Jesse is Officer Willis Weaver in the back. Would you wave your hand? And the Assistant Principal for Glen Ridge Middle School, Mr. Thaddeus Jackson, would you stand and be recognized? This program is designed to ease the matriculation process of young men in the ages ranging from 11 to 15 as they embark upon the middle school and high school years. Young men are a direct product of the older men who teach them, and oftentimes we find ourselves complaining about the way things are going, but at the same time, we are unwilling to help in making that positive change. Understanding that negativity is a state of being that can be reached with little or no outside influence, but a positive purpose can only be achieved with effort, and it must be driven by perseverance and willingness to excel and a desire to constantly improve. And so thank you Officer Jesse Day and Assistant Principal Jackson and Officer Weaver for assisting these young men, and I know too, as they dwell amongst themselves, they too are helping to lead one another, so thank you so very much for visiting. This is a day in government that these young men wanted to attend the city council meeting, and so with that, you are very welcome in being here in the Orlando City Council, and you see just how great this city is and the leadership that we have with our mayor, Buddy Dyer. The next thing I have is I attended a basketball game at the Amway Center Wednesday night, October 15th, and this was the Brazilian National Champions, National Champions Brazilian basketball team, and they played the Orlando Magic. The Orlando Magic won the basketball game, but it was a great game because these guys really played hard at this event. But what's important about this too is that the Brazilian market and influence is growing in Orlando. And on October 10th, Friday evening, Mayor Dyer and myself received the Friendly Beans Club Award during the Brazilian Chamber of Commerce Gala, and this was held at the Florida Hotel, and this award was presented by Finictor, which is the National Federation of Tourism from Brazil. So there is a great influence, and even great things are happening. We're having a bank, a Brazilian bank being built in District 6, so many positive things are going on. And Luis Martinez was there to receive the award for the mayor. The last thing that I have is the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights was here in Orlando at the Rosen Plaza on Friday, October 17th, and the Civil Rights Panel was here to listen to testimony concerning stand-your-ground views from various people within the nation, and this was a nationwide event that was hosted here in Orlando, and I was very happy that the commission was here, listening to the testimony. It was very well organized. And then in one of the panels, Senator, Florida Senator Chris Smith, an attorney, was there as well as a state representative from South Carolina, Todd Rutherford, another attorney, and Ahmad Abu-Naz, an attorney with Dream Defenders, and Attorney Benjamin Crump was also there to give testimony. And our very own Senator Geraldine Thompson was there for the event as well. She was not a part of the panel, but she did provide some great insight. And then Elizabeth Burke, the Brady Center to Prevent Gun Violence was there and presented at the last panel. But they started at 9:00 AM and ended up at 3:30 PM, but this was a great event, and people are still trying to make a difference in our society because we want a great society. And Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 1, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner Hill, I also got a tear in my eye in the march for the soccer team, but that's because two guys next to me opened a smoke bomb. It's all part of the festivities, and I'm still recovering from that, so I apologize for my voice. Activities in District 1 are on the city website, and if anybody has any questions, please call me, I'd be glad to get you involved or informed. Two issues on the agenda, C-19, which was, I asked for the Commissioner's deferral last time so that we could take another look at the BCA's decision to turn down some three-car garage issues. We've, I've met with the residents, unfortunately, we couldn't come to a solution, but I do appreciate everyone up here giving me the opportunity to work through that, so I'm going to support the BCA's decision to deny, but want you to know we did everything we could to try to resolve that. And then finally, on C-28, I need to declare a conflict. That's, again, Mayor, as I said this morning, case number 76, which is the Citrus Center Building, my company has an interest in that, so, and I filed the paperwork with the clerk. And with those, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Gray.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheen, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, anybody that was here just for the consent agenda, now's your opportunity.
Now I get excited about that. The only place you can get, yeah, we in Rose, well, you can go to City, but that's like really nice. I would do. It's a pretty good...
I was about to cry.
... Yeah. Okay, if there's no objection, we're going to recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting, and the first three items are minutes, so why don't we address the CRA Advisory Board minutes of August 27th, 2014, is there a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by Commissioner Sheen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. September 8th, 2014, CRA meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion to approve those minutes by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. September 15th, 2014, CRA meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. And number four, high-wage, high-value job creation program, Book That Doc. Thomas, there you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, and we're trying to pull it up on the computer right now. As the mayor has actually always mentioned, already mentioned in his comments earlier, we have a project before yesterday, bookthatdoc.com, which is, we think, a qualified applicant for our high-wage, high-value jobs program. Program was created originally, you might remember, in 2006, and amended just last year in 2013. It has actually four different categories that jobs can be incentivized for. The number one category is that it must, that wages must come in at an average annual wage that exceeds the county and the state annual, average annual wage of at least 115% and it has prorated wages, prorated amounts for wages that go above that of 150% up to actually 200% of the average annual wage of either Orange County or the state.
Why don't you just talk us through it, please?
Let me get my hard copy out. Is it ready now? Thank you so much. Okay, thanks. Already going through that. The various incentive programs, as I said, are the high-wage, high-value for, as you see at the bottom, the prorated scale for, depending on what the annual average wage is, the low wage being 115% of the annual average wage yields $750 per job, up to 200%, which yields $2,000 per job. The Creative Village Pioneer Incentive Award is for up to, you have to have a minimum of 50 employees, and this program is, by the way, up to 400 jobs. There is a cap on the entire program of 400 jobs, so it's capped at a maximum of $2 million over a period of time. The Creative Village Pioneer Incentive, again, up to 2,500 jobs, as it says here, a minimum of 50 employees must have a, sometimes they're appropriate authoritative documentation with creative village developers and leased space that is taxable, space within that development. Also must have a lease within five years after signing this agreement. The Downtown Living Incentive pays $1,000 per job, and again, it's prorated based on the number or percentage of employees that are living within the downtown CRA. You see, the first year it requires 15%, and by year three it has to, requires a minimum of 25% in order to qualify for the Downtown Living Incentive. And then finally, public transportation, again, is a $1,000 per job incentive, and as is the Downtown Living Incentive, it's prorated based on the number or the percentage of employees. Again, it starts at 15% in the first year, up to 25% for the third year, and these incentives per employee with their transportation spending account funding in an amount that is at least $1,000 annually. BookThatDoc.com, again, as the mayor mentioned, and as I mentioned earlier, is the application before you today, and again, the mayor's already said, they're from Altramont Springs and looking to move into downtown Orlando with 12 jobs. They expect to grow up to 50 jobs to qualify for this program. At this point, they're looking to lease 2,000 to 3,000 square feet in the Exchange Building, which of course is a very viable location at this point for this type of company, and to add 50 new jobs, as I said, over three years. Eventually, again, as the mayor said, they'd like to move into, intend to move into Creative Village and take 8,000 to 12,000 square feet, which they think will be needed because they expect to grow, project to grow to 200 employees. This is a breakdown of the entire application. They meet the lower threshold of a high-wage, high-value job incentive with an average average annual wage of $60,000 for the first 50 jobs, and you see the other incentives that follow, and they cap that at $5,000 per job for a total of $250,000 for the 50 jobs. And of course, all of these incentives are played completely after the fact, after the payrolls have been audited and monitored.
And the item before us today is the, um, for the Board of Trustees, which is the council, is a recommendation from the city's investment committee to replace one of the investment managers for the trust fund. And Chris is here to answer any questions, if you have questions regarding that. Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, the motion carries. We will adjourn the OPEB Board of Meeting, Board of Trustees meetings, reconvene the City Council meeting and we are on new business hearings, um, for the adoption of a resolution of the Orlando City Council designating certain real property within the city of Orlando pursuant to the Orlando Economic Enhancement District, uh, Florida Statute three seventy-six. Is there a motion on that? Move to a doc.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. I'll open it up to the public for any input. Do we have any cards for that hearing, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Then we'll close the public hearing. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So, the motion carries. That brings us to hearings ordinance's second reading and you are on, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending chapter eighteen A, Parks and Outdoor Public Assemblies of the Code of the City of Orlando by amending sections eighteen A point oh one, eighteen A point oh three, and eighteen A point oh eight to update names and titles. By amending sections eighteen A point oh two and eighteen A point oh six to update the listing of city parks and their hours. By amending section eighteen A point oh nine to revise the listing of prohibited activities in parks. By amending section eighteen A point ten to provide for an exception to the eighteen A permitting process if the city council approved contract has addressed the same issues, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen forty-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of Narcousie Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive comprised of four point zero nine one acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as airport support district medium intensity on the city's official future land use maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to a doc.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So, the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen forty-five. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of Narcousie Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive comprised of four point oh nine one acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the aircraft noise zoning overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to a doc.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen forty-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of Narcousie Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive comprised of four point zero nine one acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as airport support district medium intensity on the city's official future land use maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to a doc.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen forty-five. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of Narcousie Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive comprised of four point oh nine one acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the aircraft noise zoning overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to a doc.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so, the motion carries. All right. The next on the agenda are the second reading and public hearings for the GMP and zoning ordinance for the proposed Princeton at College Park. What I'm gonna have the clerk do is read both of those ordinances so that they are both before us. And last week, we received a request from the applicant to defer today's hearings to the next City Council meeting on November the third. So, after the clerk has read them, then I will accept a motion to postpone consideration of both ordinances until November the third. Madam Clerk, number four, and then number five.
The first is two thousand fourteen forty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain land generally located north of West Princeton Street, east of Edgewater Drive, and south and west of West Smith Street comprised of one point nine seven acres of land, more or less, as community activity center on the city's official future land use maps. Further amending the city's adopted growth management plan to create sub-area policy S four point seven relating to development on the approximately three point four three acre block founded by West Princeton Street, Edgewater Drive, and West Smith Street, providing for amendment of city's official future land use and sub-area policy maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date. And the second is two thousand fourteen forty-seven. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designated certain land generally located north of West Princeton Street, east of Edgewater Drive, and south and west of West Smith Street comprised of three point four three acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the traditional city, Waqiva, and Edgewater Drive special plan and appearance review zoning overlay districts on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the Princeton at College Park planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Is there a motion to postpone consideration of both of the ordinances until November the third? Mayor, I can motion to move to a time certain of November third.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ring, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, the motion carries. And the items are deferred to November third. Ordinance's first read, number one, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Narcousie Road and Clapp Sims Duda Road comprised of three point six five seven acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property urban village on the city's official, official future land use maps and establishing a new sub-area policy for the same property to provide a maximum development program, required land development regulations, and inclusion in the southeast Orlando sector plan, providing for amendment of the city's future, official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-seven. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Narcousie Road and Clapp Sims Duda Road comprised of three point six five seven acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the Narcousie Oaks planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fourteen eighteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located north of Free Zone Street, east of Boggy Creek Road, south of Eighth Street, and west of Trayport Drive comprised of forty-eight acres of land, more or less, from the R-three-A Low Intensity Development District in part and the Public Use District in part to the Industrial Park District in part and the Industrial Park District with the Resource Protection Overlay District in part on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so, the motion carries. And that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for tuning in or joining us here in council chambers.